You're ready. Mr. Crabtree's gonna lead us in the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Father, as we come to you tonight, in the name of Jesus, and we ask, Father, that you would oversee this meeting, that you would give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we go about the business for the city of Jackson, and help us to make wise decisions. Just pray for our city officials, and our police department, and all those first responders, Lord. We ask you to protect them and guide them, and we ask you to bless our city in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to call this meeting of Jackson City Council to order. The last meeting, you nominated me to fill in for Mr. Fokes. Didn't realize it was gonna be so soon, so here I am. I do still reserve the right to vote, just letting you know that part, so roll call.
Foster. Ondera.
Here.
Colby.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Newkirk.
Here.
Crabtree.
Here.
Uh, we need a motion to excuse Mr. Fokes and Mr. Foster. We'll do them together here. Mr. Ondera, can I get a second? Mr. Newkirk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I don't think we have any visitors or recognitions this evening, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. There, if you picked up your packet early, the minutes in that packet were, they had errors, so the clerk amended those and put those back out in front of you, so they will say amended next to the date. And if there be any corrections or additions to the minutes, as presented amended. Mr. Bob?
I'm sorry, I, what did you, what did you ask?
Uh, the, the-
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. No additions or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Say nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to accept the January 24th minutes as amended. Mr. Bob, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Colby? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? These are adopted. We'll move on to committee reports. Um, utility committee, Mr. Ondera.
No report.
Budget and finance, Ms. Colby.
No report.
Uh, Mr. Foster is absent, assuming unless there's anyone on the, we don't really have any committee assignments yet, we're gonna take care of that hopefully this evening. Uh, no report from the police, fire, or traffic. And for the service committee, I do have a few questions. Uh, Mr. Bob said that he wanted to talk, uh, to Rumkey about recycling. Um, I'm not sure that we should talk to him first. Uh, I'd rather have the administration talk to them before it would come to council, because if it's something that can't be done, then-
Well, the recycle isn't through Rumkey, it's through the, uh, the five-county solid waste district, of which, then they have a contract with Rumkey.
It's my understanding that Mr. Rupert wants to meet with us-
Yeah, Mr. Nick Rupert wanted to meet with the, I talked to Ryan, I thought it was the service committee to implement a recycling program again in the city of Jackson. They want to work on a plan to see if they can start that program again. That's what that was about with Mr. Rupert.
So, I, I don't have an issue meeting with committee, but I'd rather than meet with you first, just to work out anything that would need to be worked out on the administration's side. I don't know if that's something, I know Mr. Rupert, I could reach out to him and, or give you his number, or if Mr. Bob could have him reach out to you.
We just met with him a few weeks ago about this, um, ordinance on, what's it on David?
Franchise.
On the franchise, and he didn't mention anything about it. He was in our office just a few weeks ago, so, I mean, we can reach out to him again if you want us to, see what he's got in mind.
Yeah, I would rather go that route than us try to-
Yeah.
-implement something that can't be taken care of.
Yeah, we'll do that.
So, that's all I have for service. Uh, we'll move on to the auditor's report.
No report.
And we'll move on to Mr. Kirby.
No report.
And, what about Mr. Hinch?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Real quickly. In an effort for some transparency, I wanna make you guys aware of just some things that we've had going on. We've had a busy week. Over the last few months, my staff and I've made some important moves. We've developed some partnerships, acquired some basic equipment. We've kinda blown the dust off some old equipment, reactivated our drug investigation unit. All of this has been in preparation for ramping up counter-drug operations within the city. On Monday, February 7th, we executed a search warrant on a hotel room of a guy named George Fisher III. It was at the Red Roof Inn here in Jackson. Um, we've been working with intel that Fisher was a major supplier of fentanyl to Jackson. The conclusion of this investigation resulted in Mr. Fisher being arrested. He was charged with aggravated trafficking in drugs, fentanyl, in the amount 50 times bulk. Uh, I posted something on our JPD Facebook page, you can look there, there's some other details to that. On Friday, February 11th, the same week, we executed a search warrant at a residence on Trego Avenue. That's a half-block from the Jackson Middle School. We arrested George M. Tackett on two counts of aggravated trafficking in drugs, one count for fentanyl over bulk, one count for methamphetamine. We also arrested in this investigation a Sean Harris for one count of aggravated trafficking in drugs, methamphetamine. This is where this got interesting. I wanna thank Mayor Evans and Mr. Swackhammer, they've been very supportive and have encouraged a more aggressive approach to these traffickers in the city. I met with Mayor Evans about the Friday search warrant and disclosed some information to him. When he found out it was a half-block from the 556 Jackson Middle School students that many walk by that residence to and from school, he was extremely happy to hear that we were gonna take out this operation. So, I invited Mr. Evans to go with us, just to observe, and I won't speak for him, but I think it was eye-opening for him. But you guys have a mayor that's willing to put himself in some danger, just to get a better understanding of how we protect our citizens, and most importantly, Jackson's youth. I encourage each member of the council, I want you to talk to your constituents, I want you to schedule meetings with me if you'd like to, call me, but inform me of the problem areas in your respective wards and throughout the city. Ask me what you can do to help with this solution. You'll find me approachable and receptive to input from you. We're currently staffed at bare minimum level to be able to handle this approach to serious drug traffickers. Uh, even staffed as we are, it creates a strain to execute this. It's expensive, and it's worthwhile. My staff's been more than accommodating and has my deepest appreciation. They all make sacrifices to take dangerous risks to combat drugs in the community. We hope to increase our number of officers this year and further increase our capabilities. But the interesting thing that we discovered this week with these two search warrants was that we've created a void in the illegal fentanyl market this weekend in Jackson. It's been noticed by the addicts and lesser drug offenders that we've come in contact over the weekend. There's a shortage of fentanyl right now. Certainly be some others that will see this opportunity to fill the increased demands set by this low supply, but my message to those people who wanna deal these disgusting substances is that we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for the chief? We'll move on to the mayor's report.
Okay, well, thanks, I do wanna thank the chief and the police department. Um, when we talk about cleaning up our hometown, it's not, it's not just the old junk houses and the trice along the street. Uh, we wanna make it uncomfortable as much as possible to be a drug dealer in Jackson, too. Um, and they're, and they're helping make that happen, they are. And Chief Hinch is, he's the leader behind it. So, um, the telegram, you might have seen in Saturday's edition, had a nice front-page article about the bust out at the Red Roof Inn, and, and showed a picture of all these drugs and stuff, and for the first time in my, for the first time in my life, I got to see what fentanyl looked like, and what, uh, crack, uh, crack meth-
Meth.
Yeah, meth looks like. I guess I led a sheltered life and had never seen those items, but I saw a lot of them that come out of that, out of that bust, and we don't want them getting to our kids. We don't want them getting to any of our citizens, actually. Um, update you on a few projects. Um, the, this summer's paving project, I want to invite each of you, uh, as well as anyone else out there listening. If you've got a street in our town that you wanna add to our paving list, let us know this week. Um, our office is compiling, compiling the list, we already have a list, but we're, uh, we're open to suggestions for other streets of, of what you think should be a priority for paving. Um, I won't promise you we'll pave it, if you send us a list, or a street, I will promise you we'll, we'll give it consideration as we look, as we compile this, this year's list. Um, also, um, I wanna mention, uh, one of our, couple of our projects. One is an EDA grant that we had applied for of around $3 million. Um, that's a federal grant, it's very hard to get, a lot of complicated paperwork, it's, uh, most people just discourage you from even trying, but we, uh, we, Tracy in our office, with the help from, um, a lot of other people, our consulting engineer, um, Sam Brady from Economic Development, who we work with closely, got support of several industry, local industry, support letters from them, and, um, we have, got a letter that we have passed the first, the first step, I guess what it is, that we are, we have been selected for further consideration, which is the first big milestone you have to go through. Um, we don't, we still don't know we'll get this, but, uh, what it is, it's a compilation of two of our other projects that we had identified, a, a major water line replacement on South Street, and a, a major sewer line replacement, or a relining. So, um, that was big news in our office, that we at least are gonna be further considered for that, it's called an EDA grant. Um, also, um, briefly mentioned, the, um, I'm on the land bank board as, as a representative of the city, and, and, uh, the land bank is applying for a, up to a half a million-dollar grant for demolitions in the county, and, uh, we've had our code enforcement officer, uh, Mr. Lewis, working almost exclusively on this the last couple of weeks, trying to, to get homes, or projects, or, or buildings, uh, that we can include in that, um, grant application. What's unique about this grant application is, any, 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 uh, any property we put in there for possible demolition or cleanup, we have to, has to be ready to go before we can even apply for the permit. So, we're up to about 13 or 14 projects now, that, uh, that we have, we think, ready to go, that shouldn't be approved as a part of this grant, uh, and if so, those should all be cleaned, those properties should all be cleaned up later this year. So, we're excited about that. Um, uh, also, um, we do have a couple of job openings right now, um, just, just to let people know, we got a, a tree tumbler currently opening, um, and we have a, a labor position at the cemetery currently open. And, uh, I'd just like people to know when we have job openings, also, and a couple of short months, we'll be hiring for seasonal help, for mowing primarily. This, this labor job at the cemetery is a large part of its mowing, too, uh, but then we'll be hiring our seasonal help for mowing, and not long after that, we'll be hiring our seasonal help for the pool. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for the mayor?
Just one question from my own curiosity.
Yep.
What is the average price of a, of a demolition for a house? I just, I've never known that.
Probably in the $5,000 to $10,000 range, first, you know, normal house.
Okay.
The last one that the city was involved in, I think, was right there in that middle, about $7,500, so. Commercial, um, gets to be a lot more expensive, uh, and then you, and then once you get into that, you get into, uh, testing for asbestos and stuff, and then that can bring it to a whole new level again. The, uh, one of the, one of the properties we are putting in for this grant is the old bail bonds building there across from the county jail, and, uh, I think the la, the last estimate we had on that building because of possible, um, possible, um, contamination was in the 30,000s, so, and it's a small building, so. But we think there'll be enough money in that grant to do all of our demolitions. We don't really know, um, what the entities throughout the townships, commissioners, other mayors, other cities, we don't know what all they're doing, but we're working hard to get all we can of ours in there. We think there'll be enough to do probably all of our projects, we're hoping.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to the service director's report, Mr. Swackhammer.
Yeah, so my upcoming dates, the visitor and conventions commission has got a meeting planned for March 7th, uh, here at the chambers, and they are currently accepting applications for funding, anyone that's participated in that in the past. Also, February 21st, next Monday, is a holiday, so anyone that's garbage collection is normally a Monday route, will be collected on Tuesday. And civil service committee is meeting on February 24th at 5:30 here in council chambers, uh, reviewing two possible appointments, one is for the assistant fire chief, and one is for the chief of police. That's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Swackhammer? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Uh, ordinance 77-21, third reading.
An ordinance repealing and amending the city of Jackson's codified ordinance sections 5, 57.01, governing weed control.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will take the vote.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Ordinance 77-21 is adopted. On to, ordinance 4-22, second reading.
An ordinance repealing the city of Jackson's codified ordinance sections 305.03, 305.04, and 305.05, governing traffic control and declaring an emergency.
Discussion? Mr. Ondera.
Um, possibly, I don't know that I'm completely, uh, up, up to scale here on, on all of these, is this, um, this hasn't, is this doing away with the entire, um, list of signals so that we can redo this, or is this just certain, I'm, I'm a little, somebody fill me in on stuff.
Yeah, uh, the purpose of this was to take them out of the ordinances, so that we did can review them and make decisions, uh, as we deemed appropriate.
Okay, are we taking them all out, that's my question?
No, no, we may not have to, we may not take any amount, we may take some amount, but as long as they were in the ordinance, you had to leave them in there.
No, I'm saying, no, I realize you're not taking all the traffic lights out, I'm saying, are, is everything out of the ordinance so that we can rewrite the ordinance, is that-
Yes, everything that is struck through is what was, uh, the intention is to take it out. Uh, you really don't need an ordinance to have a traffic light.
Right.
And that was a question that I had asked in the last meeting, kind of along those lines, and then, but in the codified ordinance, the service safety director has the authority to maintain the traffic control regulations as of February 12th, 1962, so it's kinda, it's kinda redundant to give them the authority and then list what, what we have there, so I, I'm in the same boat that you're in. Once we wipe this out, we need to start over and at least have a way of recording what is what, uh, rather than-
Well, if we, if we don't need it ordinance, then-
Well, what I was saying is not necessarily, necessarily an ordinance, but somewhere where someone can look up and say, oh, well, you know, West Street's one way from this street to the other street, uh, some sort of, uh, record, I, I would say. Does anyone else have any discussion? Hearing none, that is the second reading of ordinance 4-22. We will move on to ordinance, uh, 5-22, our second reading.
An ordinance repealing and amending the city of Jackson's codified ordinance sections 945.07 and 945.072, governing franchise requirements for transport of garbage, rubbish, or other waste material, and declaring an emergency.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, that will be second reading of ordinance 5-22. We will move on to first reading of ordinance 6-22.
An ordinance to revise the codified ordinances by adopting current replacement pages thereto and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 6-22?
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Ondera, is there a second? Mr. Newkirk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried, discussion. Mr. Swackhammer.
You usually discuss. Uh, Mr. Peters, uh, this here, uh, came out of the Water H Drain Company, uh, for the recommendation for updates to our codified ordinance.
Uh, Mr. Kirby, do we have enough, we, we have six, can we, can we suspend the rules?
Everyone but, yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna move to suspend the rules, uh, so we can get these adopted to fall in line with Ohio revise code.
I'll second that.
Uh, vote to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Yep.
Hey, uh, Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Ordinance 6-22 is adopted. We will move on to ordinance 7-22, first reading.
An ordinance amending zoning regulation text and chapter to adding a new O District for open space recreation and museums.
Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance 722? Uh, I'll move, we adopt 722. Can I get a second? Mr. Newkirk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Discussion? Mr. Evans?
Yeah, um, this is a result of the planning commission we had a couple of weeks ago, uh, of course you were there, Ryan, um, the, this was brought to us, actually, from the historical society, uh, wanting us to add a new zone in our zoning regulation book, because a lot of the uses that you'll see listed here in this really didn't fit in any of our current zones. So, they come up with this new O-zone, uh, it's called, uh, and are suggesting we make, uh, and, and the planning committee is passing this recommendation along, that we add this new zone to our zoning regulations. That will be for parks, recreation areas, museums, um, hiking trails, uh, and just other space that's, that's not, doesn't fit into, uh, to one of our current zones.
Mr. Ondera?
Where, where are they currently?
Where are who?
Where, where, what are these, what are these areas zoned? What are our parks and-
Like our ball fields?
Yeah, I said, where, where are they, where are they zoned at now?
Uh, various, various, uh, they're, they're, they're in, uh-
Residential.
Residential zones now.
Industrial.
Uh, industrial zones now, business zones, uh, depending on what, what, uh, you know, like, um, um, the museum is in, that's probably residential, um, the parks, some of them probably residential on High Street, probably industrial over on Harding, or, or business at least.
The train depot down Broadway is in industrial, actually.
Yeah, the old depot, they mentioned, so, um, and their site, that their, you know, their historical site there at, uh, by the depot, um, is one of the areas that, what was it zoned as?
Industrial.
Industrial, and, uh, so when you go, when they wanna do something there, nothing really fits into an industrial zone, so they thought it would be best to create, create this new zone.
And just to clarify, this doesn't affect any tax, taxing, property taxing, or anything like that, is the way I understood it.
No, when stuff is evaluated for tax, for property tax purposes, it, it doesn't really matter how it's zoned, what matters is how it's being used.
Right.
And, uh, you know, the value thereof, so, I, I don't think it would negatively affect any bond, um, it, uh, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of areas that aren't being used the way they're zoned, a lot of them, and, um, that was one of the things we discussed, had, had been discussed in a couple of planning commissions, what do you do with stuff that, um, where, where whatever was put in a zone that wasn't meant for, and it was, the zoning was never changed, you know, what do you do about that? You know, you know, do you try to go back and force them to change their zoning after the fact? Uh, we have a lot of areas that aren't zoned correctly, things that were put in zones, even, and many times since the zoning book went into effect 30 years ago, but it just wasn't followed. So, we don't really know what to do. Most of the areas, I, I mean, my advice is just let a sleeping dog lie, I guess, um, but they come to us on this, that- But they come to us on this, that what they wanna do doesn't fit in their zone either. So they were wanting to rezone it. But why do they rezone it too? Because nothing in the zoning fits what they're wanting to do down at the, you know, the, the old depot site. So, um, they actually, on, on their dime, hired an attorney or, or they have an attorney on their board to kinda create this. And then, of course, Joe took it from there. Um, and the planning, the planning committee, uh, commission reviewed it and thought, that sounds like a good idea. We'll see what council thinks, the full council. So here you are.
Also, from that meeting, we learned that other cities in Ohio do this. And, uh, it's not something that, you know, is...
Our, our zoning book, realistically, I shouldn't be completely updated. Um, it's thirty years old, is that right? Forty years old, I'm sorry, forty years old. Yeah, and, uh, but, you know, we got so much going on. That's hiring another consultant and trying to work through, uh, updating a book that's forty years old on something that's very difficult and very complex, such as zoning rules. So, uh, we thought at this point, we will just, uh, go ahead and put this before council. See if you wanna amend the zoning for this purpose and, and go from there. Um, the very next ordinance, uh, also, uh, we can't talk about yet, but we'll hear in a minute. The very next ordinance also come out of that same meeting. We'll talk about it when it comes up.
Is there any other action that we'd like to take on ordinance seven dash twenty-two to make?
We don't, we don't need to have this done at first reading.
Hearing none, that will be first reading of seven twenty-two. We will move on to ordinance eight dash twenty-two, first reading.
An ordinance repealing and amending zoning regulation text in chapter two regarding zoning district regulations, chapter four regarding residential conversions, and chapter nine regarding definition of the mobile home.
Uh, motion to adopt ordinance eight dash twenty-two. Mr. Ondera, can I get a second? Mr. Newkirk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, uh, discussion, ordinance eight twenty-two. Mr. Evans?
Like I mentioned, from that same meeting, uh, there were some things in our residential districts that have, uh, become issues for us over the last two years that we wanted to try to clean up. Um, one of them was a setback along an alley. Um, one of the, one of the three, one of the four residential zones required a seven feet setback on an alley. Uh, and the other three didn't, and we couldn't figure out why. It almost seemed like an omission from forty years ago. If there is a reason why, we couldn't figure it out. And then, um, a couple of other things, we, uh, all of this is, is proposed updates to the, to that zoning book. Um, the other one was adding a minimum square footage, uh, and requiring a, uh, a perimeter, a perimeter foundation and footer. Things that we just thought helped, helped us, um, helped, uh, you know, our office and the service director and our code enforcement officer deal with, uh, help prevent some of the problems we've dealt with in the last year with, uh, residential building permits. In, uh, the first part of that is just a- adding some more verbiage into the residential zones. Uh, then there's adding, everything in here that's underlined is adding to the, to the zoning regulation book. Um, anything that struck out is stuff we're gonna delete or replace with something that's underlined. So if you look through it, it's pretty easy to understand. Um, residential conversions, that's where you take a, a garage or something that's wasn't a residence and turn it into a residence. We added some restrictions there. Uh, definition of a mobile home, um, because there were some regulations about mobile homes, but not a definition to what was a mobile home. So that's, uh, proposed changes from the planning commission to, uh, and administration to the regu- to the forty-year-old zoning regulation book.
Mr. Reed?
I have a question for, and I'm kinda combining the two. And it was saying that, uh, on D, lot requirements, and that was the one prior. Is that gonna be included in this too, where it says minimum frontage on a lot seventy feet? Is that something totally different on the...
Uh, it's, it, the lot, uh, frontage is different under the different zones. That's what it would be for an O-zone.
Okay, okay.
It's not that much on the residential zones.
That's what I was trying to make sure that...
No, it's thirty-five, isn't it?
Yes.
I think it's minimums thirty-five frontage on a residential.
That's which a lot of the lots, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, yeah. All the other regulations would stay as they are in the book, except the ones that are noted, noted here. That's changed.
So coming from the planning meeting, the recommendation for the minimum square footage was to, I guess, wrangle in the tiny house. I guess it's a fad. It is a fad, right? It's like something...
Yeah, we've had some issues with, um, tiny houses, or whatever you wanna call them. Uh, or more specifically, um, like a, uh, one of those yard barn type structures that are put in and converted to residential. Um, you know, nothing against them in the right place, but they can devalue a neighborhood in a nice residential area. And, uh, we're just trying to, uh, trying to, uh, you know, no matter how, how tight you make the requirements, there's, you know, eventually some way finds a way around them. And we're just, uh, trying to clarify it so there's less gray areas.
Absolutely. Is there any other discussion on ordinance zero eight twenty-two? Or any other action to take on that tonight?
Once again, we don't, we don't need this to be passed on first reading, but we, you know, just wanted to get it before council from the planning commission.
Any other questions for Mr. Evans? Hearing none, that will be first reading of zero eight dash twenty-two. We will move on to ordinance zero nine dash twenty-two, first reading.
An ordinance approving additional appropriations in the recreation art endowment fund project expense and declaring an emergency.
Motion to adopt ordinance, uh, zero nine twenty-two. Ms. Colby, can I get a second?
Second.
Crabtree, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried, discussion, uh, on ordinance nine twenty-two. Mr. Reed?
The endowment fund is money that was set aside for, uh, encouraging arts and appellation in our area. And what was done with the money when it was first donated was put into a fund, and the interest was what was going to be used off of it. Um, last year was the first time any money had been drawn out of that. Um, we have a couple entities currently seeking money from this. So this is the interest that has been drawn, or part of the interest. And the mayor actually heads that committee. So if it would suit council, we'd like to see this pass so that when they meet, it could be awarded, uh, for a, a project. There's a committee, the setting of the mayor, myself. Do you know who all else? I'm not even sure.
It's, uh, this fund is commonly referred to as the David Brooks Jones Fund. That was, um, he left quite a bit of money to the city, um, for the use for the advancement of, of, of youth, or arts in youth. And like Mr. Reed said, um, that, it could only be the interest used as per the, the will or...
When it was, when it was set up, the committee, that's the way they set it up at this point. So it, we have groups that will do a presentation and ask for the money to be used and explain how it's going to be used. And then we decided by the committee to give out the money or to not give out the money. But this just puts some money in the budget. This doesn't even mean that we would give this money out. It just means that we have money sitting there. So if it's a deemed reasonable use of the money, that, uh, the committee can give the money out. So it's not appropriated in this point.
Well, how often does this, uh, group meet? How often does this board meet?
Uh, in the spring and then the fall is what we did last, the last couple of years. And then, like Mr. Reed said, last year was the first year any, this, this, uh, this money's been there a long time, drawing interest, but none of it ever been given out. And, uh, last year we start, decided to try to give a little bit of it out to get it used for what it was intended for. And that's, that's what this, this ordinance does, is to allow us to do that again this year.
Is there any other discussion?
I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Ondera, can I get a second? Mr. Newkirk, roll call vote.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree. Bob.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Ordinance zero nine twenty-two is duly adopted. We will move on to ordinance ten dash twenty-two, first reading.
An ordinance repealing and amending ordinance eleven dash twenty, so as to revise the rules of order governing the council of the city of Jackson.
Motion to adopt ordinance ten twenty-two. Mr. Bob, can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Ondera, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, discussion for ordinance ten dash twenty-two. These are just our minor adjustments to, to our committee as a whole and to move the... Say it again?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
So the, you should've had, uh, I, at least I tried to email copies of the ones that showed the changes. So the changes here, as, uh, Mr. Peters said, adds the committee as a whole, uh, rather than the, uh, the, um, committees that we've had in the past. And we've changed that to where, um, there will only be a vice chair, a chair and a vice chair appointed. So that's, uh, one of the changes in the rules, and I think that was five. The other ch- no, I'm sorry, that's not five. I'm sorry, ten. Uh, the other change was, uh, to change the agenda so as to move the second visitor speaking with the first visitor speaking. Um, I took the liberty of keeping the number of total visitors the same with the people that are signing in first, are going first. So if you use your maximum with people signing in, then people signing in immediately before the meeting would be at the end. The only other final change was not asked for, but throughout the meet, the rules, for some reason, it kept referring to elected members of the board or, and of the council in various words. I just deleted the word elected. It seemed to be unnecessarily confusing if you have appointed people or anything like that. So that, that was all of the changes in there. I think there was also maybe a one for chairperson instead of chairman.
Is there any other discussion regarding the changes? If it doesn't work, we always have the right to change it back. We almost went over budget last year on council for pay for having so many long, drawn-out meetings, uh, committee and, and everything else. I mean, I guess we'll have that when, when things were changing and things continue to change. Obviously, it takes a little bit of time, but I think, I just think this would streamline the entire process. Everybody who's a chair will still remain as chair. You'll run your portion of the meeting. Uh, that way we can, uh, tackle it all at once rather than having the committee meeting, having a recommendation, going back to council, and then restarting that whole process of explanation over. And then if there's any changes, get kicked back to committee. And it got kinda out of control, and we were spinning our wheels on a lot of topics that were, uh, you know, time wasn't of the essence to, to get some of the stuff completed. So I, I know we can, we can change it back if it doesn't work, but, uh, everything else is running more efficiently, so why not council as well? So, um, do we wanna take any action on this tonight?
Motion to suspend the rule.
Motion to suspend by Mr. Ondera, is there a second? Mr. Newkirk? Roll call to suspend.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment of the rules? Uh, the roll call vote, sorry, stop.
What does, uh, there's no emergency calls on that, so just does that need...
Thirty days.
An actual enactment?
It would be thirty days following.
Like I said, I don't think we have any, uh, committee meetings scheduled currently, so it would, would fall in, uh, about the next time we'd have a council meeting, so. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Ordinance ten dash twenty-two is adopted. Move on to resolutions. It looks like we have one, resolution zero five twenty-two, first reading.
A resolution of the legislative authority of the city of Jackson authorizing a contract with the village of Middleport to provide housing of Jackson prisoners in the Middleport jail as needed and declaring an emergency.
Can I get a motion to adopt resolution zero five twenty-two? Ms. Colby, can I get a second? Mr. Bob? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Uh, the motion's carried and we'll have a discussion, uh, I guess, Mr. Swackhammer?
Yes, uh, this contract actually expired at the end of December, uh, in the current one. And stuff, they just now got around to doing their budget. So if, uh, if I can get council's support, let's just move this one forward.
And I noticed the end date on this one is January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, which extends the time a little bit. So we'll have to look that one up. It's a pat on the back. Mr. Ondera?
The, uh, price per day, um, I, uh, I have no problem with that. The, I guess the issue, and maybe it's more of a question for Mr. Hinch, is that, that sometimes these people get kicked out, right?
Yes.
I mean, they, if they become unruly or sick or say they're sick or blah, blah, blah. Um, do we have any, do we have any recourse there? Are we just at their mercy and we gotta go pick them up?
We have passed, this council has passed other, uh, contracts with other jails. This isn't committing, that this is the only place that we get to use. This is just saying that this is one of many, that they like to have some kind of formality, that, that, that there's a signature agreeing that this was the price disclosed to you.
Okay.
These are the rules of this facility. This is what they have the right to do. And so this is, this is a formality between multiple jail institutions that we may have to use throughout the course of the year.
Okay.
Uh, if somebody got kicked out of this Middleport jail like you referred, um, there are a multitude of options that we may use, but one of those is very well, let's call another jail and see if they'll take them.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just trying to...
This price that's in here is three standards.
Right.
It's something between sixty-five and seventy-five dollars.
Right.
Per jail. This is on the cheaper end, and it's close.
Yeah.
We like that.
Right. Yeah, my, my, I guess my question is, seems to be very, uh, non-cost effective to have to go pick them up all the time. And that, that seems to happen a lot, does it not? Yeah. Uh, we just don't have any, we don't have any other recourse in that, I guess.
No, I present...
Okay.
Need more jail space.
We do need more jail space, yes, I agree.
You know, I'd like to get in the jail business, I'd, I'd be in favor of that too.
I'm sure you would.
Need to support the county getting a, add a, additional jail space.
Is there any other discussion on resolution zero five twenty-two?
Do we need this right away?
Yes, please, please, yes.
Current one has expired.
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Ondera, can I get a second?
Second.
Ms. Colby? Roll call vote to suspend the rules.
Ondera. Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote to adopt.
Ondera.
Yes.
Colby.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Newkirk.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Resolution 0522 is duly adopted. We will move on to correspondence. Nothing reported, old business. I believe we have no visitor signed in to speak. Under new business, anyone? Mr. Ondera.
I have fielded a few complaints about noisy vehicles within the city, so I guess I'm looking at Mr. Hinch again. I'm a big, I'm a big fan of muscle car. I love what it sounds like, but at 3:00 a.m. at the stop sign, it's, I, I, I'm not a fan anymore. So we have a few vehicles in the city and they are primarily one type of vehicle that has the greatest muscle sound of all. And lots of guys, young guys, I guess, maybe some old guys have picked that vehicle up. And I'm sure it is beyond the, the limits of what the ordinances allow. There's not an actual decimal. I looked for the ordinance and there's not an actual decimal put in there, but I guess that is at, at the discretion of the officer, I guess.
If I could respond to that?
Absolutely.
Okay. We have cited what problem you're, I think, specific problem you're talking to. We've, we've actually increased our traffic enforcement significantly, including that. I know that, that, I live in town too. There was one night, I called in and I said, I've been hearing this for an hour and 15 minutes just driving around town. Will somebody go find this thing and deal with it?
Yeah.
And so I think that's beneficial. I, I don't live real far from, from where you live, but you could do it all over town. So we have increased the citation on that.
Okay.
It doesn't allow us, it's a minor misdemeanor, doesn't allow us to impound the car, doesn't allow us to tear the car apart or force them to get one on. It could just get real expensive to drive that around. But it's finding it, not having something else to do with the one or two officers that it may have on at night. So it is sporadic, but I will make sure after this meeting to readdress that and make sure that people, my people know that that's a concern that maybe needs a little more attention put to it.
Appreciate it. I, I, I can't attest to the fact that there's been more patrolling on the streets and stopping and that kind of thing because one of your officers stopped me last week.
Yes, yes.
I did a rolling stop on Oak Street and he was, he was right behind me. He wasn't right behind me, he was somewhere hiding out in the bushes, I'm sure, but he did, he did catch up with me about State Street. But he was, he was gracious to me, I might say. Great job.
I would also like to say that's a huge problem in town. Where I live, there's a brick building directly to the west of me and a brick house behind there and an empty paved parking lot. So it sounds great to the guy when he guns it at the stop sign, but it doesn't sound great at 3:00 a.m. So I understand you can't stop all of that, but I wish it was legal to throw rocks.
You guys have the power to fix that. However, I would, I would like to add, you don't have to be the chief of police getting annoyed to call into the police department and say, well, somebody take care of this problem. Anybody, any citizen can call and make that complaint. We'll check it out as available. We'll try to stop that. And like I say, if, if several of you are having the same experience that I've had, that may, that may motivate just a few more of those citations. $180 a whack, two or three times a month, a lot of times can convince somebody, maybe next month is cheaper to just get a different muffler system, so.
I appreciate that. I have some new business if you're finished.
Okay.
I met with the admin earlier or later last week and we discussed some of the qualified ordinances that are in reference to like the coin op vending, taxi cabs, junkyards, and recycling is included in that as well. It is their thought process that some of these ordinances that are qualified cost more to, cost more in administrative fees, like sending out letters, prepping things than these are, than these ordinances are bringing in. The coin op, it's like vending, I guess you would call it, ordinance, I guess there's, you know, that's all governed by the Ohio Revised Code. It's really not bringing in the amount of fees to offset what the admin's mailing out and preparing the documents and all that. I would just like to know how the council would feel about if any of these are brought back to us next meeting. If, a couple of them we probably just need to wipe out. We have one recycling center and the fee's like $150. Well, by the time we prepare the documents, mail the documents, wait for the, wait for the money to come back in or have to send someone if the money doesn't come in to go knock on their door, the bureaucracy of that, that entails isn't worth the $150 that we're bringing in for one recycling center. So just trying to get a feel of what everyone would, you know, think or just some quick discussion about just removing some of those coin op taxi and then the junkyard. So anybody have anything that they would like to say or add or any concerns or?
We have one of each of those in our, in our city?
Yeah. I mean, the, the vending is too hard to police. We discussed this. I mean, if I have a friend who has a business uptown, I put a gumball machine there, how am I gonna, how are they, how am I gonna go pay that? How is anyone gonna know that gumball machine's there? And I mean, is Ray gonna go out and inspect the whole city for a gumball machine or a pop machine that's in? I've got 10 employees and I got a pop machine in the back and it's a quarter for a pop out of there and I just do it so they don't have to leave or whatever. Am I gonna be charged $25 because I provide my employees a $0.25 pop machine? So it's, it's, I get it, it's bringing stuff in, but we've also got to be smart and say, hey, this is costing more than we're bringing in. Why have it? I don't say, you know, it's not a free-for-all because I'm sure they're, and correct me if I'm wrong, the ORC does cover these three, these three items that we're talking about.
They are covered at a state level. And as you mentioned to Mr. Peters, it's just one of those things that, you know, some of them are commercial activities and, you know, we're trying to encourage commercial activities and we're not really other than charging somebody a license or something for something we're not really providing a service for. It's one of those things, why, why continue?
I, I agree. Just trying to get a feel if we would present this back to, to council if, if that's something that anyone would have any opposition to. Any other discussion? The only other thing though, that I would like to see out of that, let's use the stamp and send them the list, a form saying, hey, you realize we have a city income tax and you have to pay that? That's what I would like to sit, use the stamp for. Okay. Does anybody else have any other discussion under new business? Nope. All right, I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Hey, could I give one reminder? I just want one, give, give you all one reminder again that if in your ward or anywhere in the city, if you've got a street you want out of the paving list, this week's your deadline. I don't want to hear about it after that. Once the list comes out, it's too late.
Okay, can I ask a question? Is High Street on that list?
I can't tell you.
Is it a secret or?
No, I just don't know. But you can add it on there if you want. You call the office this week. I'm just saying, this week's your deadline.
I'm making it official.
This week is...
I'm not calling the office, I'm giving you a note.
This week is your list.
You want to talk about the gas project?
Yeah, David's mentioning here, just as information here under new business, funding gas has got a, a pretty sizable gas line replacement project and we're working with them, we're working with them right now to coordinate it, to make sure we're not, you know, and to coordinate future projects to make sure they're not tearing up a road the year after we pave it. And it's over in the, from South Street to, you're on.
Ed Michaels.
And from, well, and there's another part out on Ed Michaels, but the residential part of it is from South Street to David Avenue between Vaughn Street and David Avenue. So there will be streets in there that are on our list that we may not pave this year because the gas company is gonna be doing a lot of work in that area. So the, the west central part of town, I guess you would call it there, and then part of it out by Mount Zion. So any streets that are on the list, there are some streets that are in bad need of paving that haven't been done yet because of possible upcoming projects that might tear them up again. For instance, well, several of the projects we've talked about, if, if, if we've got a proposed project in the areas of them streets, we're not gonna pave it yet. But it's okay, it's on the list. We've got a lot of streets on the list for this year that were also on the list for last year. We didn't do them last year and we're not gonna do them this year because we hope to do some utility work in that area. And that's the same way at this area, like Orange Street, we did the, we did Orange Street west of David Avenue last year and we're planning on doing the rest of Orange Street this year, but it's in that area that the gas work and so it's likely we can't. So like I said, I'm not going to promise you that, that I'll pave your list, but if there's, you know, if there's something that everybody in your neighborhood's always bugging you about or it's in your ward or whatever, at least get it on the list if you want it on the list. We may or may not do it and there may be various reasons. If it's, if it's a low traffic area or it's not as bad as you think it is, or we've got scheduled work in the next couple of years that we think we're gonna try to do there, we're likely not gonna pave it, but we'll tell you why, if there's a reason why. And I just want to, giving you all the chance to, to add a list, add a street to the list if you like.
How long is the, is the gas company gonna be doing their thing?
Right about same paving season, right about paving season.
No, I mean, how long is this, is their project supposed to last?
Right about paving season. It'll, it'll, it'll start late spring and finish late summer.
And that'll be, and that'll be it for them?
For that project, yeah. That's their project for this year, yeah. We're already talking about what they might want to do next year.
Yeah, they're supposed to meet with us in late April to discuss their 23, 24-year projects. But this project is supposed to run through, like the mayor said, around the end of April 1st of May through October. Their, it'll be a gas project, there's two major projects, all of them in that same area.
It's hard to look ahead far enough. There's gonna be a street that we pave that the next year gets cut up for something. We've already cut up for a water line break on one of our newly paved streets. It's gonna happen, but we can at least try to plan for it as best we can.
Sure.
And work around that. It's still gonna happen.
Yep.
Can I ask a question about curbs? On Pearl Street, part of it's in my ward, the other side of the street. What the other guy worry about? The south side of Pearl Street.
It's all in our ward.
The curbs are all missing. I mean, if you drive down through there, there might be two section, two foot section and then nothing and it's a pretty heavily traveled area and it's also on the parade route for the Apple Festival, so it's...
Sacred ground.
Oh, yeah, it's heavily used and just wondering what, what, what's that look like? I know you've done a lot of curbs and sidewalks for projects, but what's that look like for the average Joe on Pearl Street getting his, getting his street prettied up a little bit?
We're gonna continue repairing curbs, sidewalks where, where they're needed. How we prioritize them so far has been to, to keep ahead of ODOT projects where they require us to do that or, you know, it's a highly traveled main road, if it's an ODOT project, it is. So that's where we focus mainly so far is to stay ahead of the ODOT projects. And we've got a lot of work to do yet this spring to be ahead of this year's ODOT projects. Yes, we, we, I plan to keep doing this for as long as I'm here. As long as we're here, we're gonna keep trying to do those type of projects too. We will eventually get into the residential areas, starting with the main streets like you're talking about. Pearl Street is the main street. But, you know, I wish we could do them all this year, we just can't. But we will, we're gonna keep doing it every year and just, it's, it's same as paving, it's just a matter of what's the highest priority. And we, they all need it. They all need it. There's not a street in town that probably doesn't need curb work.
Right now, you'll notice that we're out on Morton Street. We had to actually expose those curbs and gutters out there and so we've got that done because that's part of this 93 paving project. We've got to get back uptown around the Walgreens intersection up there. We've got to come back there and do some work ahead of the 93 project. And then we've got, what, we got Broadway, we've got work yet to do on.
East Broadway?
Yep, East Broadway and a little bit on Athens between Bridge and River Trax.
And this is all for, for ODOT projects that are scheduled this year. So we probably not gonna get in the residential area, even where we're paving with, with curbs yet, but you, you know, you, you can do it before or after the paving. But we're trying to get done what ODOT wants us to do as part of those projects first. And it, the need is massive. The need is massive, just, just like every street in town needs paved, well, there's not a street in town that doesn't have curb work and gutter work or, or storm sewer work that needs done too. They all do. Some streets don't have curbs. A lot of streets don't have curbs. Lot, lot areas of town, a lot of streets don't have curbs, a lot of areas in town don't have storm sewer. But, you know, we deal with what we got and try to make it better.
Fair enough. Anything else under your new business? Power for every holder piece.
Move adjourned.
They have to have somebody...
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ondera, can I get a second? Mr. Bob? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign.